I call the Charlottesville City Council March 4th, 2025 meeting to order. Ms. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Ashrin.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pinkston.
Here.
Counselor Smoak.
Here.
Mayor Wade.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the consent or amend the agenda?
I move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay.
Can we vote? Okay, this meeting, this meeting will be divided into three sections. The first is a work session, where we hear discussion and presentations that do not require a council vote and followed by a closed session. And then we will come back about 6:30 for a regular business meeting. And the first presentation this evening is on the solid waste program. Mr. Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Stephen Hicks, Public Works Director. Today, we're going to be giving you all a review of a request that was from last year, exactly this time last year, where council would like for us to look at exploring, fill in the gap of our expenditures of our current solid waste program, which is 2.7 million, and the revenue we collect, which is 1.1 million. The last time there was a discussion on this or any changes was in 2007. So I do think at least just to have a dialogue of where we are on our rates is helpful. I'm going to turn it over, though, to Seth Cunningham. He's with NewGen. He's the consultant group that we hired to do this rate study. And after the presentation's done, or actually during the presentation, any questions, definitely we'll try our best to answer it. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Seth. Oh, in addition, council members, I do, we do have staff here that manages this solid waste program too. So should there be any detailed questions or any additional questions regarding our trash collection process, by all means.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Seth Cunningham with NewGen. I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to the presentation we put together. The, we looked at the overall solid waste program, cost of service and fee study, and a layout. Actually, how do I advance the?
Is the clicker on, which side is the little clicker on?
Look below you. Is it below you there? Is there anything over there?
Oh, it's up here in front of the.
Is that what that is?
Wait. No, no, that's one. It's there in front of the.
All right. Logistics. All right. So we'll cover a few key things. One, kind of lay out, what are some of the key policy decisions for you all to make decisions on in the future, you know, provide an overview of the current system, look at a recommended rate structure change that we had developed, working with city staff, some benchmarking data that we collected as part of this. Look at some example, what I'm referring to is pay-as-you-throw rates, which I'll get into. And then finally, a summary and potential implementation steps. So in terms of the key policy decisions, I mean, I think the first one is, you know, related to just overall, you know, how much of the cost of providing service do you want to fund through rates? And by rates, like right now, those rates would be through stickers and decals versus through, you know, supplementing with the general fund. Right now, about, the revenue is about 40 to 45% of the cost. And that's just of the core services, which gets into the next policy decision. Is, you know, which cost, if you want to recover your full cost, what cost do you want to recover? I think historically, you focused on what are their core services. So that's the collection of both recyclables and refuse, as well as disposal and processing. There's also additional services that you all provide to residents, such as leaf collection, large item collection. There's compost drop-off programs and other programs that are all solid waste related. And so that's what I'm today calling additional services. And then finally, do you continue with the existing sticker and decal program? Whether it's looking at changes to those fees for those, for those stickers and decals? Or do you consider an alternate rate structure? So in terms of the, the current program, you know, again, right now, revenue is only from the, the purchase of stickers and decals. There is also a small amount of revenue for the large item collection. And then the, the revenues have been relatively stable. Over the last several years, it's kind of been in that 1.1 to 1.2 million dollar range. But the expenses have increased significantly over the years. And currently, just those core services is about 2, 2.7 million dollars per year. And then those additional services, like the leaf collection, large item collections, other items are about another 1.1 million dollars. Currently, the revenue, there's approximately 15,300 customers. There is some auditing going on, so the number could change a little bit, but that's the best estimate at this time. And when you look at the, that revenue, if you take that revenue divided by 15,300 and divide by 12, it gets to about $6.19 per month.
Sorry to interrupt. So is it the case that essentially between core services and additional services, we're, we're spending about 3.8 per year?
That's correct.
So close to 4 million?
And the 1.1 to 1.2 is all revenues?
All revenues, yep. Minus about $70,000 for large item collection, somewhere in that ballpark, so.
Basically a quarter, is that right?
Yeah, close to it, yeah. So, yeah, that, that 1.1 change million dollars divided by 15,300 divided by 12 gets you to about $16.19 on average per month compared to just those core services, that 2.7 million. If you did the same math, divided by 15,300 divided by 12, you get about $15. So this is just a sample of some of the sticker and decal costs. There are some additional ones. And I know the, the small business 64 gallon, that one's actually been discontinued. It's still in the ordinance. But I was made aware that one's no longer available. But, and, and Stephen mentioned that it's been released since 2007, since these have changed. I think some of them have been in place since 2004, according to the Treasury's Office, and then some were added in 2007. So it's been quite some time since these have been changed. But a small sticker, for example, is a dollar five. And I have a column here that says monthly equivalent. And part of that is to help kind of benchmark against other communities that have a monthly fee and try to standardize on the 32, 64, and 96 as a basis of comparison. So as if you had a dollar five sticker, the small sticker, if you did two and a half bags per week, that gets you to 32 gallons. That'd be equivalent to about $11.38 per month. Did the same thing with the larger sticker prices, so the equivalent of 64 gallons worth of stickers would be $18.20 per month, and then 27.30 for 96 gallon with the stickers. If you were to purchase a, a decal for the year, at the beginning of the year, those rates are a little bit less. So highlighted there, the 64 gallon decal, so $189 if you buy that in the first quarter of the year, and that would equate to $15.75 per month, although residents is required to pay that upfront for the year. And the reason we highlighted that one is we do have some benchmarking information and where the data was available. We tried to standardize on that 64 gallon rate as the basis of comparison. So what this shows is if your revenue continued to be relatively flat, so a little over 1.1 million dollars, your, your costs are going to go up. And a large part of that is because a large part of your costs are contracts with a private operator, and they escalate those. And so if your rates, revenues remain relatively flat, if you, if you've made no changes and your costs continue to go up over the next 10 years, that would equate to roughly another $22 million impact to the general fund. And that's for core services, yep.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. You said costs escalate. How, how often do we renew our contract with the vendor?
I know the collection for the recyclables and the disposal and processing were new contracts in the fall. I don't have handy the escalation. I don't know if.
But it's usually just kind of tied into the contract that's going to go up over 3% or 4% a year.
Yeah, a lot of them have a CPI adjustment annually for those contracts. And then the, the refuse collection is an older contract and is set to expire in November of '26.
Okay.
And so here, again, this is focused on core services that if you are, you know, running a deficit each year, again, assuming that you change nothing else, that would just show the, the impact over that timeframe. So in considering, you know, what, some alternatives, you know, one alternative is certainly to, to keep the exact same structure you have and, and increase cost. If you did an across-the-board increase, it would take approximately 150% increase in the sticker and decals to get that 1.1 million dollar number to get to closer to 2.7 million. And that's approximate, but this gives you a sense of scale. And so, you know, we're also looking at some alternative rate structures. If I can get this to advance.
Mr. Man.
Sorry. Oh, there we go. Hopefully doesn't like, go fight forward now. And so some of the criteria we looked at, you know, is it equitable? Meaning, is there a mechanism so that the more someone needs the service, the higher the rate is for that service? You know, does it encourage recycling? Is it affordable compared to other communities in the area? That's where our benchmarking comes into play. Is it consistent with what I consider industry best practices? You know, in terms of, quick aside, in terms of my background, I do, my focus is solid waste and particularly on the financial side. And so I've worked with communities across the United States on similar matters. So, so I see a lot of the, you know, what's happening with other communities and within the industry. Another one is, you know, continuing to allow subsidies for those who need, have the need and qualify. And is it financially sustainable for the city? And so based on, I'm not sure where I should be pointing this for it to work.
You can also just say next slide.
Okay, so my next slide.
Rem me in the back, I might be able to help.
Appreciate it. Is, rate structure recommendation is to look at transitioning toward a cart-based pay-as-you-throw. And pay-as-you-throw is just a common industry term, meaning that the more you need, the more you pay for that service. And so, I mean, what you have now, I would consider also a pay-as-you-throw system. It's just a different form of that in terms of having the, the bags and decals. You know, someone needs more, they can buy a bigger decal or buy more stickers. So this is specifically a cart-based pay-as-you-throw system. And, you know, most cities that, that have this implement two to three cart sizes. And so what we had recommended was looking at a three-cart system, potentially a 32, 64, 96. And then other services that exist today in terms of recycling, large item collection, leaf collection would continue as is. And we feel that this rate structure and the associated operational changes would meet all the criteria that we discussed in the prior slide. And these carts are very similar to the recycling cart that's in the field today, as well as the, you know, some residents that purchased their own carts, similar to those style of carts. So it's something that's kind of already out there in the field today, just used in a, for solid waste in a consistent manner. I'll try this one more time, but. So going back to cost of service, earlier I mentioned $15. That's really those four top bars there in this graph. So refuse collection, disposal of that, recycling collection, and recycling processing. We will look at just those four services. It's about $15 per, per household per month. And then all the additional services there, leaf collection, street sweeping, use of the McIntyre recycling, city collection, which is, you know, city, some city buildings, compost drop-off, some administration of the system, all these other items all add up to about $6 per month. So combined, roughly $21 per month. So this includes benchmarking information from a number of communities in Virginia. And right now, if you take that 64 gallon cart for the year, that equates to roughly $15.75 and compare that to what other communities are paying for a similar cart size. Now, the, the note here added was a lot of times those monthly rates do include other related services. So similar to Charlottesville, other services could be things like the leaf collection, large item collection, drop-off programs, other programs within the city that are related to solid waste recycling. I did note that for Roanoke, they state that their cost is roughly half of what, their rate is roughly half of what their cost is. So I'll just note the average of all those is, is $25.05, and I will come back to that number in a minute. So we looked at a, a pay-as-you-throw rate example, where looking at the distribution of carts. So if you had 30% of the residents were, were elect, to elect a 32 gallon cart, 55% is a 64 gallon cart, and a, and 15% a 96 gallon cart. And then looked at a monthly rate, kept a $6 distribution between the three. And so for the 64 gallon, it's very close to what a 64 gallon cart costs. Although if it was done on a, built on a monthly basis, you would get a $16 bill per month versus needing to pay $189 upfront. The 32 gallon at $10, and the 96 gallon at $22. If all residents paid a monthly fee in those, one of those three amounts, based on that distribution, it generated about a little over 2.7 million dollars per year, so roughly equal to the cost of those core services.
For the assumed distribution, where did that assumption come from?
So it started with the sales of the current decals. I think that is skewed a little bit toward the smaller end because people have the option of getting a 32 gallon decal and then adding a sticker as needed. And so I, I based that on what I've seen from other communities as well. I think generally, that 32 gallon percentage of 30% is probably higher than what I typically see. I think the 64 gallon is commonly the one that, that people gravitate to, and then you get smaller numbers on the larger and smaller. It was based on a combination of looking at data that you have, but also looking at other communities and the distributions there.
Since we have the option of doing a decal or stickers, how does the, the people who purchase stickers factor into that assumption?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on the question, yep.
So if you're, you're, you know, we've got like 15,000 households or whatever, and, you know, a certain number of them get the decals, and that is a standard thing that's easy to look at, but everybody else does stickers.
Gotcha.
And how is that incorporated into the assumption?
It, it's difficult to say exactly because those aren't tracked per household, so it's hard to know how many households buy how many stickers. So unfortunately, I don't have an exact answer for that. And so, again, you know, I think part of the next steps in looking at implementation is doing some outreach and getting feedback from the community, understanding what the needs are. Because if you were to go out and move forward with the program like this, everyone would need to elect a cart size. And that would be, you know, part of an implementation process.
Okay, thank you.
While we're here, can I ask one other thing?
Yep.
In our various housing studies we've had done, we've been told that there are roughly 20,000 households in Charlottesville. That would suggest that about a quarter of the people are not customers.
Do you know if that number included multifamily?
That's total, I mean, if, if there's a, I think what it means is if you've got a 10-unit apartment complex, it's 10, it's 10 units, 10 households.
So the 15,000 is what we consider largely a single family, although it would include units that had, I think, four or less, I believe. Yep. So would not include apartment complexes that have more than four units.
Or like folks that are serviced by a dumpster.
Correct, yeah.
Well, I see, okay. I mean, what I've been sort of grappling with in all of this is, just thinking about my own personal experience, we don't fill, we would not fill up a 64 gallon container in a month. Not every week, not even in a month. That's just me and my wife. When we had three kids with us, we would never have filled up a 64 gallon container. In fact, a 32 gallon, the 32 gallon canister that we've got right now has, has been our, our, our garbage can for about 30 years. And I know, I've already heard from a number of people who have said, I'm living on a fixed income. My husband and I are the only ones here. We don't generate anywhere near as much garbage as you think we are, and you're effectively going to be quadrupling our garbage costs. And I'm wondering, is there any way to, to, I, I saw a response from, I guess, Mr. Freeze maybe, that indicated that, well, you don't really want to have a smaller cart because it, it doesn't work very well with the equipment or something like that. But I, I just, I, I'm looking at this and thinking, there's got to be a way that the folks who, like, like us, who just don't generate that much garbage, can, cannot have to have our, our costs quadrupled.
Yeah, I mean, one thing, you know, and I'll try to address that, let me know if, you know, if there's any further questions. But one thing, I mean, comparing, you know, the rates here to the current sticker and decal prices, which, if you, if, if the goal is to recover the cost, then those costs would also, those, those prices for those stickers and decals would also have to significantly increase. And so, are you comparing a, a cart rate aimed at full recovery versus a sticker price that does not provide full recovery of those costs for the city? Or are you comparing it to what the city would have to increase those rates to in order to start to recover the cost? So a dollar five sticker, if you were to increase that by 150%, isn't a dollar five anymore. And so it depends on what your basis of comparison is there. I mean, you could put less expensive rates here, and obviously that would reduce the revenue. And so I, I think there's also, you know, apples-to-apples comparison component to that. But in terms of the physical cart size, I mean, I have seen communities, not that, not that many that have smaller than a 32 gallon. I think, you know, there are, you know, a number of considerations there. It's certainly a possibility. But there are operational considerations. I think the thing about the, the equipment piece of it is sometimes the range of sizes is difficult for the trucks. So having it set well to collect a 24 sometimes can like crush the 96 gallon cart, or having it set well for a 96 gallon, the 24 gets dropped into the truck because the arm is picking it up, can't grasp it very well. There's inventory consideration in terms of just having more cart sizes that you've got to stock and repair parts and things like that. And being a little bit smaller, they may be a little more susceptible just to getting blown over by the wind and, you know, other, you know, getting tipped over, things like that. So it's certainly a possibility, but there are, I think, some considerations there.
Do you have a sense of how much of the cost of collecting the garbage is what I would term a marginal cost as opposed to an average cost?
So the cost of collecting a 32 versus a 96 is identical virtually. The, the difference is the disposal side of it.
But, I mean, it would seem to me, just, you know, just sort of thinking about it for about two seconds, which may be dangerous, that you've got a huge sunk cost in terms of labor and, and equipment and everything else. And I would think that the cost per gallon of garbage is, is relatively low compared to that sunk cost.
So, you know, go in, if this remote will work for me here.
So part of, part of the issue is, to what extent are we going to be relying on, on everybody else who isn't producing much garbage to be sort of subsidizing the folks who are producing the garbage?
Correct. I, I think that's the reason for, and I'll go back and forth between these two slides. So this slide showed just the collection piece of it, on average, $7.70 per household. So not even factoring in how much is disposed from that household, just the.
Okay.
Going by and going by that household. And so, and that's where all the sunk costs of having the equipment and the people and all those things out there. And so it's one, and the city is paying that regardless of someone sets out. And so when, if they don't buy a sticker that week, there's no revenue generated, but there's still a cost associated with driving by and doing, you know.
Sure.
That access.
Do you just have a couple more slides, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. Because I had some questions too, but I wanted to let you.
Okay. But so going back to this example, example structure of 10, 16, and 22, in this scenario, really the, the 22 gallon for 96, to some degree subsidizes the $10 for the 32 because the, really the differential cost between those three for disposal is, is smaller than $6. And I think that's part of trying to encourage recycling by essentially having the larger container-sized customer paying a little bit more of the share than the smaller container-sized customer.
But in terms of, of cost, you know, sort of, well, sort of the average cost per gallon of garbage, the folks who are, who are doing the smaller units, 32 gallons, are paying more per unit of garbage that is being disposed of than are the folks who are, who are disposing of more? Are they not?
Not necessarily. I think what they'd be paying per collection is the same, and the, the cost for disposal, you know, that part of it's the variable part. I, I know Mr. Pinkston had some questions as well. I think I just have. I think I just have a couple more slides, and then if there's time allowing, could address that, okay? The next slide follows the same structure, but just looks at recovering, if you wanted to look at, not necessarily immediately, but over time, recover those additional services. And so instead of ten, sixteen, twenty-two, it shifts that roughly six dollars, which is the cost per month of those additional services, to sixteen, twenty-two, and twenty-eight. Again, these are examples, you know, the, you know, these could be refined during implementation. This kind of gives you a sense of what something like that would look like and to fully, to generate enough revenue to recover all of those costs. And so the twenty-two, sixty-four gallon, twenty-two, the weighted average number of twenty-one is still considerably less than the average of twenty-five dollars from the benchmarking. So i- in summary, you know, the current revenue from stickers and decals is not sufficient to cover the core costs that are largely contractual. There are, you know, additional solid waste recycling-related costs that are currently funded through the general fund. You know, the sticker and decal program is kind of a manual or semi-automated collection service versus, say, for example, your recycling collection is, is largely fully automated. So the cart base page you throw would shift to a largely fully automated system. And then, you know, it, I think there's, you know, worked with many communities across the country, and kind of the trend is toward this cart-based system with automated collections to kind of shift Charlottesville to be in line with, with a lot of what other communities are doing today. So an example implementation, where we are, you know, this isn't something you flip a switch and it happens overnight, there is, you know, a process to, for implementation. And so what we would recommend is initially just an increase to the current stickers and decals. You know, we use a, you know, consider something along the lines of a twenty-five percent increase, which does sound like a lot, but given the fact that if you look at, it hasn't been a, a change to that since two thousand and four, yet costs have considered, have continually increased. So that, that doesn't make up the difference where you are today, it just, you know, makes up some of that deficit a little bit. And then use the next fiscal year to plan implementation of a cart-based service, because there's a lot of considerations, there's the billing component, you've got to look at the next collection, procurement of the next collection contract was going to expire November twenty-sixth, there's an education component, there's purchase of carts, whether that's the city doing that or the potential contractor. There's a number of things to consider through an implementation, and you don't want to rush through that. And then set the initial twenty-seven rates, fiscal twenty-seven rates to recover, just the collection disposal and processing, while I was considering the core services. And then potentially looking at phasing in additional rates over time to incorporate some of those additional services that are being offered. A couple other considerations is looking at the, on the ordinance, having the city be the exclusive provider for the single family and up to four units, residential customers. And then, you could also consider whether or not the city would provide service once the existing collection contracts expire. So again, just additional considerations. I believe that is the end of my, my slides. Mr. Pinkston, did you have, you say you had questions?
Could you go back, please? So the bottom there, does that mean we have our own, we would have our own trash trucks, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Oh, that sounds exciting.
You're really excited.
Touch on that.
Yep.
More localities, are we considering that just to be able to control the cost a little bit better? Just because the industry, there are a few that are literally just monopolizing the industry, and then also it provides additional, additional kind of service they could provide for emergency events and stuff. But that would be something we'd have to carefully study. And Mr. Sanders has expressed why do we want the headaches in different ways? So it would be something that we would have to carefully look at, but some are moving towards that direction.
That was my question, is within like our service region, how many providers even are there? Because my understanding, it's pretty close to a monopoly, which would obviously give them the ability to kind of set costs wherever they would like.
We would have to get back with you if you want that number, but in general, most of them are relying on, on the solid waste service companies to provide that service.
We have a distinct, one contractor that does trash and one that does recycle.
Correct.
And it sounds like the recycle works better because people just load all their stuff up in the big bin and there's no sort of, are the costs for that picked up in the rates for everything else? Is that what happens?
I don't know how our contract is spelled out on that one.
Yes, and currently there's, if you are a city trash customer, you qualify for recycling service
I see.
free. But with this, it would be absorbed with whatever rate increase we would discuss.
Okay.
And currently there are two separate contracts, however, the same provider won both of them.
Oh, is that right?
That is correct, yeah.
How about that? Yeah, I guess my question would be to the rest of council is, is there a reason why we would not want it to be the case that this is fully self-funding? What's the, I know that Lloyd, you have mentioned in times before that you thought that it was part of the core duties of the city to, as opposed to the county, where I guess they just chuck it wherever to pick up trash, but right now we're subsidizing all of this by about three million dollars a year, right? If you include the, if you include these extra, what you call non-core pieces. I just wonder why we wouldn't, why, why this wouldn't just be something that we would expect people to pay for? And, you know, you spoke about your family, my wife is absolute hound about this, I mean, she, it's amazing how little trash we put out. So if we were to get rid of the thirteen gallon stickers, she'd be really mad at me. But, because she, and I think lots of people, the emails that we saw, there are like lots of people saying, look, I can get down to not much trash at all, and if we gave, if we, if we went away from having that as an option, I, I can appreciate that it's a difficult thing to track, but I think it would be a mistake to get rid of that option because it, it allows a lot of people to really like, really minimize the trash they put out.
And that's behavior we're trying to incentivize.
That's right.
And the concern that I've got is that where you've got, basically, looking at, I don't know, at the page fifteen of our, of our packet, I don't know what page it is of, of this, but if you're charging ten dollars for a thirty-two gallon cart and twenty-two dollars for something that is three times as large, you're not incentivizing economy. You're not incentivizing recycling.
Well, my, my concern, I guess, would just be, and certainly I think, you know, not being touched in so long, there's a lot we could do to long-term make it more sustainable. But depending on how you do it, my concern would just be, it is a core service, and depending on what rates you set, you could be having an annual cost increase, you know, around a hundred dollars or more for some families, which would be the equivalent to, for the average household, a one cent increase of the real estate tax. So it's not a negligible difference, and it just kind of seems like a backhanded way to raise revenue in an even more regressive way than the real estate tax, depending on where we want to set the revenues at. And I, you know, I really don't know the industry, but I also have the concern, you know, with who we contract with for picking it up, that they are a monopoly within the region, and that there's a lot of cost there that's just rent-seeking as compared to if the city was doing it on their own, you know, what the, at cost of the service could be. But, you know, that's just a guess, I don't really know what the cost, you know, come out to.
Standing up our own gas or trash system would really be expensive, but I don't know. Yeah, I may appreciate your point, Michael, about particularly, you know, the regressive aspect of it, but to me, this is one of those things where if you're generating the trash, you should pay to have, you should pay for your trash. I don't, I mean, I see it differently than like other social, social justice-type issues. To me, if you're, if you're generating refuse, you should pay to have that disposed of. Maybe we can figure out a different way to do it than these rent-seeking monopolists, I agree with that. And the other question I had was on the decals, I, I get the fact that it's difficult to track, but we know how many we sell per year, right?
The decals, the stickers
The stickers is what I meant to say.
So you know how many, I think, are sold, but sold to whom, you don't have
You could just like average it out, right? Have you done that?
Oh, yeah. And I don't have the number off the top of my head, I don't know if you, Connor, would mind looking up the number of, of stickers, but
Those are thirteen gallon or?
Well, there's, there's thirteen gallon for the small and thirty-two gallon for the large, for the two sizes. Sure, go ahead.
So there's two ways of
If you wouldn't mind speaking into the microphone so people at home can hear, thank you.
So there's two ways of sale point for the stickers. There's directly from the city, which are considered internal, and then external vendors. I believe the city of Charlottesville sells it to them at a slight discount, and then they sell it to the customer at the charge that the city of Charlottesville would sell it as an internal. And in FY twenty twenty-four, there was eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two internal stickers sold. And in, for external stickers in the same fiscal year, there's sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven, so about eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen thousand, so about thirty-five thousand total.
Thank you.
But we don't know how many people that is, we just know the stickers.
Right. If you looked at what I would consider a true cost of service, those ten, sixteen, and twenty-two would actually be closer, because collection is the predominant cost driver there, not the disposal. I mean, and so the difference is really disposal between those three. And so that gets into a little bit of, of kind of the, the policy piece of it, is setting a rate to encourage diversion or encourage people to divert more and get a smaller container, is there's the financial piece of it there. And so what I laid out here was trying to strike a reasonable balance of those. It doesn't mean you couldn't revisit those and say, ten dollars is, should be eight dollars, and the twenty-two should be twenty-four, you know, you, you could shift those around a little bit. But I think that's more of a, a policy-driven decision versus a, a cost of service decision.
Yeah, I mean, to me, one way you do this is you just back into, you know, how much, I mean, stickers and decals and everything else, and you figure out, and you know your total costs, and then you distribute that in such a way that the cost of each of these stickers and decals and whatever matches what it takes to run the system. I mean, do we have a line item in our budget called trash or refuse?
She's coming.
Well, we don't have, I'm sorry.
Just to be able to give you facts.
Yeah, there, there is a line for the operations part of refuse collection. There's also the landfill closure piece that I believe is in your three point eight number, or no?
It's not.
It's not. Okay, yeah. So there are two components to that, but yes, it is a line item within the public works budget.
Yes, I'd just be interested in what other people thought about.
So, I, I had a couple of questions and comments. So the way I'm hearing is that the, what we have been charging has been, you know, relatively low compared to other cities of what I, what I saw, we were like, you know, fifteen, and I think P-Town or Portsmouth was like thirty-five, and, you know, so we're, on average, was twenty-five, and we're at about fifteen, sixteen. So it sounds like we've been low, and I don't think I read or missed it over where, where we hadn't raised prices since two thousand, about twenty years?
I'd say more or less twenty years.
Yeah. And so the revenue is one point two, the cost is three point eight, roughly. Did I?
Three point eight, including those, those other like non-core services, correct. I, I did want to address a comment about the, the stickers as well, you know, if, if you allowed stickers to be placed out instead of the carts, there is just a collection efficiency consideration, because an automated collection vehicle, the driver staying in the vehicle and operating the mechanical arm from inside the vehicle, and then it would just require them to exit the vehicle to grab that. And if there's not a cart there, they don't have an easy way to get it into the truck. Sometimes if there's an extra bag, it's a paid bag, they'll get out, they'll empty the cart, get out, put the bag in the empty cart, and then, and then dump the cart again. So it's just, you know, consideration there too. It, it may sound easy to just be able to put out a bag, but you have to think about how it's being collected as part of that consideration.
Do we know, by the way, what, what private service is charging for comparable service in Charlottesville? Jason's going to need a lot more. I mean, I always wondered why people bother to have private service that I was assuming was more rather than going with the city's essentially subsidized service.
So I want to hear from Natalie, because we do have another presentation, but we can go a little bit longer, I would like to kind of give an hour to each, so I want to give another fifteen, twenty.
Yeah, thank you, I, I do have several questions. On this slide and the following slide, the core services and the additional services, I just want to clarify, you're saying those are two different options for how we could do the price structure?
So this is kind of more similar to how you've viewed it in the past, from past presentations, of just kind of looking at those, those core services of, of collection, of refuse recycling, and then the tipping fees associated with your disposal or recycling processing of those materials. So this is just, this slide is just focused on those costs, and then the next slide is if you also were looking to recover costs associated with those additional services.
Right, so it's two different options.
Correct.
There's option A, it would be like ten dollars for the smallest version, or we could do sixteen, that's the suggestion.
And, you know, in the implementation, one consideration is to start with this and work towards the other one, phasing it in, just because it is potentially a big change.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that those were options, not one building on top of the other.
Correct.
Okay, and then, I have to be honest, this is not what I was expecting to get when I requested a study of the, the trash at the end of last year. I was really just expecting a presentation on like how much we should raise our sticker price, and if there were any other things that we might want to consider, like bringing it in-house or something like that. So I was a little surprised to read this when it came out on the agenda. Because of the reaction that, that I had was similar to the reaction that Councilor Snook had, and Pinkston, and a lot of the constituents that we've had email us in the past week saying, I don't generate enough trash to make this worthwhile. Same for me, I maybe put my, my trash can on the curb twice in three months. And yes, it's me, and occasionally, not just me, but like, it's not that much money. So I, I don't go through a whole sheet of stickers in a year, and there's lots of other people out there like that. So suddenly jumping up to ten dollars is a lot of money versus doubling the trash sticker? That's fine. That, that works for me and for a lot of the people that we have right in. And I know I'm not up here just because of what happens to me, but because of what happens to our residents. So I, I don't think that updating the sticker cost is off the table. I think that's definitely still a consideration that we should keep in mind. The, the assumptions, I'm also, I, I'm not sure that those are assumptions based on our community because of that sort of thing. The, the amount of trash that we produce is, might be different than other areas where you've worked, I'm not sure. I know you did the comp set comparison for pricing.
And I, I did look at the amount of waste that's, you know, because we, we can track total disposal
Sure.
right, at the transportation, and look at that, and look at the number of households, it works out to a little over twenty pounds per household per week. Which is very much like a lot of other communities out there. And so, you know, it, it ranges, you know, but I think twenty to thirty pounds per household per week is, you know, a pretty common kind of range of numbers. And so, I mean, I, I do think it's, you know, and from the average across all households, you know, I think it's in, in the, in the range of what we would see in other places.
What would hap, if this was something that we were interested in shifting to, what would happen to all of the bins of the people who already have a trash bin?
Yep. There's a couple of options, they maybe have a use for it, you know, at their household. There's, you know, something, when I've looked at options like this, when they've made transitions, you know, set up areas for them to recycle them if they would like. I mean, I know that some people have purchased those on their own, but you want a standardized cart from, for a page you throw system.
And so, the, the reason why And so the reason why I'm still stuck on the stickers of it all is because for the pay-as-you-throw system, that seems to be the most tailoredized way to do it. It does eliminate the efficiency of having the mechanism. But if I suddenly had to pay ten or sixteen dollars for the trash collection every month, even though I'm not using it at all, that is not the incentive structure to reduce my trash volume, whereas the sticker is exactly how much I need. And so it is kind of more tailored to what everyone actually produces or incentivizes them to produce less, so they have to use fewer stickers. I'm not, the debate about whether or not this should be fully funded or a city service, I'm not sure I fall particularly strongly in each, in either camp. So for now, I would be happy to see us recoup at least some of those costs, if not all of them, but make that, it is an extent, it is a big divide, and I think that divide can be closed. I don't know if we need to close it all the way, especially not in one fell swoop necessarily, but I think there's, especially if we haven't updated the prices since two thousand and seven, there is room to do that hundred-and-fifty percent increase on stickers or whatever the options would be. I would love to see what options of the sticker adjustment would look like.
One thing to point out as well, I mean, a challenge of the current sticker programs is kind of the enforcement element of, you know, we, driving around the city, you can see carts that have had stickers upon stickers placed on them that are supposed to be removed. So making sure that what's picked up was actually paid for is just more of a challenge. It's not saying that, you know, there is some auditing that happens, the contractor is supposed to look after that. There's just opportunities for things that kind of fall through the cracks. And so raising the prices may shift some of that as well. If, you know, just creates more opportunities potentially for, not more opportunities, but more incentive, you know, to look for ways around that.
True, and that was a concern that we had from a constituent last year at some point where he noticed that the stickers weren't always collected or they weren't always on there when it was collected. And that's, you know, a training or an enforcement thing that we absolutely could work on. I've been, that's happened to me, too, where I pull it out and I don't go back out to put the sticker on, and then the next time I'm like, oh, gosh, here's two stickers. Sorry about that. But not everyone's going to do that. Has there, was there any research into picking up garbage every other week?
So I have seen some, you know, I know there's a question about cart size. That's been another approach that I've seen on the very small end, looking to go at every other week garbage. And I think, again, that's a consideration. There's always weighing the pros and cons of that. It's just when it's set out every other week, it's putting in the onus on somebody to know, hey, is that person supposed to have it this week or not?
Our recycling is already every other week, so that's already something people consider.
All right, right. But the expectation is everybody gets it every other week versus one neighbor is getting it every week, and the next neighbor gets it every other week. And so I think there's some ways around that. Maybe it's a special cart that designates it every other week.
Or just across the board. Maybe not for commercial enterprises, but residential.
I guess I've never seen that implemented on a citywide basis.
Yeah, that would be interesting to look into.
You have to be very careful about when you put chicken bones in your garbage.
So, of course, we're not going to vote on it. So Sam, were you looking for a direction or?
No, I think I got it. We have some work to do. And we'll come back.
Thank you. This is.
Could I get clarity from the rest? It sounds like I know where, I think, Michael is, what about, and Natalie is, like you said, sort of halfway between, I guess, me and him. What about you and you guys in terms of how much you feel like we should be recouping?
Well, I'm fifty percent, and right now it's like twenty-five percent we're recouping.
I'm fine with the idea of at least moving toward, whether we get there all the way is less important, but let's start on the way towards recouping more costs. If I were sort of just reacting off the top of my head, I would, I would say that rather than setting rates at sixteen, twenty-two, and twenty-eight for thirty-two, sixty-four, ninety-six gallons, you know, maybe reduce the thirty-two gallons and increase the ninety-six gallons, and maybe you start to incentivize people to have less garbage. And you could still get to the same overall number.
Yeah, I'm in the camp that, similar to Lord, I haven't looked at like what the cost would be for the different gallons, but to move closer to the cost of the service. So even if we just increase it over the next few years, get a few more hundred thousand dollars or whatever, whatever that number is towards that gap, I think we need to do it. And probably, you know, and I know a lot of things that we're doing now that we were able to kind of focus on and study, but probably not go, you know, have the cost in the future, kind of more keep up with the cost of the service and, you know, not, you know, go this long again. Because it seems like when we do have to address things like this, it seems like it's a, it's a big, it's a big deal, and it is.
I'll say, I also, it never occurred to me that there is a cost to the city when I'm using my little plastic garbage can because it's less, you know, it's harder for the city to, it's hard for the garbage folks to deal with than if I were to have a larger can that I don't actually use much of. But I've had the same plastic thing for thirty years, and, you know, it's just the way it is. But there's some costs like that, that, I mean, this is very illuminating in a lot of ways to realize where all those costs keep coming in. And maybe there's some ways we could create some incentives for people to do things that are a little less expensive for the city.
I mean, in some cases, with communities that have had, like what I consider a manual collection, you know, in some cases, the carts can be what I call semi-automated, where the cart can be placed up against the back of the rear loader, and there's a hydraulic tipper that dumps it. But when it's people managing all that, you know, that is a job that's up there in terms of dangerous jobs, you know, and people have tried to move away from that because there's a lot of worker injuries and things like that as well.
It's good information. You got to think about it.
So Natalie, I heard that you're kind of in the camp of moving a little bit towards sustainability or paying the cost?
Well, I'm inclined to increase the price of the stickers. I don't know if we need to go all the way right now, but in general, I support a sticker increase.
Michael, did you have anything else you want to add to this discussion?
Just again, I think for some customers, the increase would be equivalent to us raising the real estate tax by one cent. And we've relied very heavily on our most regressive taxes while only raising the real estate tax by one cent, and it's still lower than the early two thousands. That, and then I.
That was for the ten-dollar monthly fee?
Depending on, depending on what your usage currently is, as I understand it. And then the other, with the comparison to other communities, obviously, most of those communities were geographically much larger. I'd be curious, kind of the comparison of their cost, what they charge versus the total cost for them as an agency. As well as, you said, a lot of those costs are factoring in additional services. So it's not, I'm not sure it's quite apples to apples, but.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item that we have is the natural gas decarbonization, next steps.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilors. I'm Lauren Hill-Brann. I'm the Director of Utilities. And I'm here to talk about the Charlottesville gas decarbonization study and next steps. I wanted to acknowledge the staff from the Office of Department of Finance and the Office of Sustainability who assisted with this study also. The agenda for this afternoon's presentation, I'm going to go over a little background on Charlottesville gas, the decarbonization goal, and how this study aligns with the city's goal, decarbonization study and the timeline that we've been undertaking for the last couple of years, benchmarking lessons, customer-led pathways, pathways under the Charlottesville gas control, the modeling that was associated with the system, decarbonization, and next steps. Charlottesville gas, we're a city-owned gas system, and we're one of three municipal natural gas utilities in Virginia. The other two are Danville and Richmond, and we've had gas operations in this community for about a hundred and fifty years. We currently have twenty-one thousand fifty customers, and of which fifty-five percent are in the city and forty-five percent are in the county. And our customer base is generally residential, about eighty-nine percent. So the Department of Utilities initiated and funded this study as part of ongoing work to address the challenges of decarbonizing energy-related emissions in the community. And I will want you to note that we're the only municipality natural gas system of our size in this country that has undertaken a study of this kind. It was a voluntary initiative. We weren't required to do it, but yet we wanted to support and align with the two citywide greenhouse gas reduction goals adopted by City Council in two thousand and nineteen, which in two thousand and thirty, we see a forty-five percent reduction, and in two thousand and fifty, we're carbon neutral. The timeline for our study, we started in November of two thousand and twenty-two with a gas mitigation survey where we surveyed residential customers, and UVA Survey Group assisted us with this. We selected Black and Beach Consulting Firm that had done previous studies for other similar utilities. Some were private, some were, some, most of them were public gas. I guess some of them were private and some were public. But we did select Black and Beach in December of two thousand and twenty-two. We've given three previous presentations to City Council, a kickoff in March of two thousand and twenty-three, and then two updates in October of two thousand and twenty-three and March of two thousand and twenty-four. We also conducted a business focus group where we brought in different business sectors around the community to get their input in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four. And then we held community engagement sessions in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four where a hundred and seventy people participated. And the summary of all of their comments are, can be found in the appendix of this, of this report. Black and Beach finished the study in December of two thousand and twenty-four, and the final report was delivered to us. And then we released the report to the community in January of two thousand and twenty-five. So the decarbonization study evaluated multiple pathways. It looked at carbon offsets, renewable natural gas, hydrogen. We also looked at customer-led actions or actions that are out of the Charlottesville gas control, which included electrification and energy efficiency. The consultant looked at the emissions impact associated with those different pathways, as well as the cost of those different pathways. We also looked at benchmarking our gas operations by looking at opportunities to reduce methane emissions and enhance our energy efficiency programs. Just some, just to move into the benchmarking lessons, Black and Beach reviewed the data that we report to FMSA annually. This is the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Administration, but we're required to give them certain information about our leaks and methane emission leakages. And they use that to compare against other municipal utilities with similar operations. They also reviewed our energy efficiency programs that we offered and, or that we currently offer, and they compared that against other programs of peer utilities. I'm not going to spend a lot of time in detail on how that comparison, because they spent a lot of detail in the last March update to council. But I'm here to just talk about the recommendations that they came up with. To reduce methane, they ask us to continue to complete our leak surveys of the residential gas system every three years, which is more frequent than the required FMSA five-year interval. I might add, we do the business sectors every year, and this is, that is a requirement that we will not change as well. Along with those leak surveys, we grade the intensity and characteristics of the leak. And depending on, you know, I always think we kind of go a little bit beyond what's required. But when you grade a leak, depending on the intensity and characteristic, you don't have to repair that leak right away. And, but yet Charlottesville gas, we repair the leak right away. Other gas companies don't do this. Like Richmond Gas often gets criticized that they've got thousands of leaks there occurring. Granted, they may be grade, you know, a grade, such a grade that they don't need to address it right away. But we don't let a leak go. We repair it right away, and thus, we reduce our methane emissions automatically by not letting that leak continue. We also install excess flow valves on our service lines. This is a valve that you place generally at the property line so that if the homeowner accidentally is digging for something, you know, on their property, and they accidentally hit the line, it will automatically, it will shut down that service line so that emissions aren't allowed, the leak isn't allowed to leak out through the service line. This actually was a requirement by FMSA in two thousand that these excess flow valves were installed on all residential services, and it was required in two thousand. And we've been doing it since then. They came out with commercial requirements in two thousand and seventeen, which we currently do. And it was really enforced as a safety precaution, you know, it was a safety issue. But it inherently reduces your methane by cutting off that point of that leak. We also were urged to continue investing in our public awareness programs to prevent third-party excavation damages. It's, that's especially important in plastic systems of which, of our mains, we've got about eighty, eighty percent plastic material. We also are asked to continue to emphasize the existing training in the operator qualification program. And this is what we're required to train our operators and anybody that works on a gas system to be competent. Typical crew supervisor is, will take about forty-five computer-based tests to make, to ensure he's competent. And then he's got fifty-five field tests that he's got to pass on a regular basis to demonstrate his competency.
Sorry, I just, before you go on to the next slide, I have a question. So if you're still on this slide, keep going.
That's okay.
Okay, so it says at the bottom, the measures are already being implemented by Charlottesville.
Yes.
Were these being, did they start being implemented during the course of the study or before?
We've always implemented these. We've always, and I think that was demonstrated when they were going over the peer review with you guys last March, that, you know, we, we've always taken the approach, we kind of go over and beyond. So there wasn't anything they could recommend that we weren't already doing, other than we continued doing it. So, and not stop.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We don't have any plans to.
Could I ask you about the excess flow valves? Are those on, based on every house?
We are working through the system, you know, because we just started the program in two thousand.
Okay.
And so if somebody needs their service line replaced because something's been damaged, we'll, we are, we go ahead and put an excess flow valve on it.
How many would you say are out there? I mean, fifty percent of the houses?
I need to get back with you on that.
Just ballpark.
Maybe.
I mean, it seems to me like that's, that's an incredible safety benefit.
It is a safety benefit.
I mean, you think of all of the houses, you see, you see places in, I think the last one was in New Jersey, where a whole block goes up in flames because, I mean, it presumably would have been prevented if they had one of these sorts of valves.
I don't know about that. It depends where the, where the damage occurred.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, it is, it is, so we do have to inconvenience people when we install these because they have to turn off their gas. So it's, we usually, we, when somebody needs their service line replaced or some repair done, then we go ahead and install these, but, because they're out of gas at that point.
Thank you.
They also recommend that we develop and implement preemptive pipeline and equipment maintenance or repair. And with this, we are replacing our last mile of cast iron pipe from. And with this, we are replacing our last mile of cast iron pipe from our system, which is located in the West Main or the corner area. As most of you know, we were fortunate to receive a $7.1 million, million dollar grant from the, from the U.S. Department of Transportation and the FMSA group through the Natural Gas Distribution Infrastructure Safety and Modernization Grant Program. And we're using these funds to improve that system. And according to EPA, you have about, based on losses of cast iron versus plastic pipe, there's 25 times more chances of losing gas through a cast iron system than there is plastic. So we are incentivized and we have the money. And we're currently under design of this system. And we were hopeful that we would be ready to start construction in the summer of this year, but because the design's taking a little longer than we thought it would be and we're incorporating also our water main replacement that needs to be done in that corridor at the same time, so people are only inconvenienced once, we anticipate we'll be starting with this in the summer of 2026. And it's a two-year project. I might add too, along with this, we also have as part of our O and M procedure manual that if, if we have occurrence of a failure in a certain proximity, we, you know, like sometimes we have caps fail that are fused on in a certain proximity, then we have to go in, if we have three of those happen in a certain location, then we have to go in and replace the entire system. And we've had that occur in recent years on Nassau and some other streets, but that's also part of our regular procedures to make sure our system does not become into disrepair.
Sorry, can you go back real quick?
I don't know if I can. Okay. Yes.
Again, at the bottom, it says estimated 3,006.07. What is that, what is the unit?
So that is, hold on. Because I don't keep these in my head. That is a metric ton of carbon dioxide equivalent.
Thank you.
And just to put it in perspective, well, I don't know if I want to put it in perspective. If you look at our 2011, based on gas emissions, we've got 86,920. So 2011 baseline, just to put that number in perspective if you want to.
Was, what was it, sorry?
So the 2011 is 86,920 from a difference. But yeah, so it does, it does reduce our emissions.
Okay, thanks.
So recommendations on our energy efficiency program. It suggested that Charlottesville Gas should modify its existing appliance rebate program and we should include rebates and incentives to encourage its existing customers to adopt high-efficiency natural gas appliances. This is something we're certainly thinking about, but it may have unintended consequences based on the second bullet because we should discontinue any incentives or rebates promoting switching from electric to gas service. And sometimes that's hard to track. You know, that's the one reason we decided to discontinue the tankless hot water heater because it meets, you know, we couldn't track generally if people were moving from electric to gas service on it. But we did discontinue that as part of that recommendation in July of 2024. So the first, the first suggestion, it does take some thought behind it and consideration. Another recommendation, the third recommendation is we should offer custom incentives tailored for specific customer segments that include commercial, industrial, multifamily programs. As part of this, a few years ago, West Haven, they approached us about participating in funding their attic installation improvement. We were able to do that through our income qualified program. So that was a major success that we coordinated with LEED. And the third recommendation, we are looking at this because there were some comparisons with other large utility programs that are doing this now. And so we are looking to see if we can implement something that's similar, but have a successful program that would relate to utility of our size. Another energy efficiency recommendation is increase the awareness of our rebate programs. We found based on our customer mitigation survey that there was low awareness of our current energy efficiency programs. Attic insulation was 68%. People not familiar at all. Programmable thermostat is 57% and our free home weatherization program is 49%, which we're kind of surprised by because it's not for lack of trying to get outreach efforts. We include, we do postcards and periodically put it in the monthly e-newsletter, utility newsletter where we have over 11,500 subscribers. But obviously we need to do more that, and it's not, you know, there's been some comments about, oh, we should fund more, right? We should fund more. Well, we have funding that is not used. We think we don't have a funding issue. We've got a public awareness message issue that we've got to work on. So we've been talking internally, how can we get the word out? And we're thinking about changing the message and doing some things differently that, and from, that we did on our gas safety program. But more about that in a little bit on another slide. They also recommend we should consider expanding building envelope incentives and exploring, offering incentives that further increase building efficiency, such as ductwork and other insulation rebates. And this one we saw based on our customer satisfaction or customer mitigation survey, we asked the question about what would be the main reason for you not to apply for attic insulation rebate? And most people think they have adequate, 68% said they have adequate insulation. Yet we know that 70% of the homes in the city were built before 1970 and probably don't. So there's opportunities here. And we also ask on that survey, within the past three years, have they done any energy upgrades to their home? And 67% said no. So there's a lot of opportunity here, which we have fashioned our new energy efficiency program after, that you'll hear about more in an upcoming slide. So moving into customer-led pathways on energy efficiency, you've got to recognize that energy efficiency is largely dependent on the end user's customer's willingness to invest or modify their behavior. So we can't necessarily make people do this, but we could certainly get enough public awareness to try to incentivize people, but we'll have to, we'll have to, we just have to see. It's hard to forecast the impact of, of energy efficiency initiatives. And our consultant, based on natural gas usage between 2010 and 2022, using weather normalized, normalized data, the average consumption per residential customer has declined by 1% per year, which is certainly factored into the modeling that they did. Another customer-led pathway is electrification. And the report does acknowledge the potential of emissions reductions through electrification. And this is a customer-led initiative again, such as fuel switching are largely dependent on end users, customers' willingness to invest or modify their behavior. And as a natural gas-only utility, Charlottesville Gas cannot use the natural gas enterprise funds to subsidize a private utility. But yet the Office of Sustainability has funds where they promote and programs that they promote renewable energy and electrification opportunities as well as energy efficiency programs within the community and municipal operations.
So that third bullet, why is that the case? Is that a legal thing, something from the General Assembly or just a choice?
It, you know, we have often thought that when, we believe it is a legal thing or it also goes to some of our financial policies. We have some questions about this right now that we're consulting with our city attorney's office to give us a more definitive answer. But I know based on my experience in utilities, you, 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 to be fair to ratepayers, you only pay for what they, the, the operations of the utility that's involved, like water, wastewater.
The whole point of climate change is that there's all these extrinsic, external implications it has on people that is not priced into the cost of gas. I mean, if you priced in the cost of gas, the, the, the externalities of climate change, then if you really wanted to be a capitalist about it, then natural gas would cost a lot more because of the fact that it's, it's ultimate impact on the climate, but anyway.
On that point, you know, is, is that third bullet point based on specific, a specific bill that was passed by the General Assembly? Because I know across the country, it's fairly common for there to be surcharges on natural gas utility bills that go towards various public benefits, usually environmental, but sometimes even non-environmental consumer programs.
This one, we are quoting one of the, the General Assembly's, which is reasonable and fair rates for, I forget the, the code name, but it is something we've asked the city attorney's office to look at a little further.
So I had a question about the third bullet point as well, which is, what counts as subsidizing a private utility? Like if we were, like you had the incentives and the rebates for the tankless water heaters and all of that, but if we were to offer incentives and rebates for electrification, does that count as subsidizing?
Yes, it would.
Dominion?
Yeah, yeah, it would because Dominion is the private utility.
So even though we're offering a subsidy for the appliance, that counts as a subsidy for the electrical provider?
Depends on what the incentive is.
Like if we, if we say, turn in your gas stove and we'll give you 150 bucks toward an electric stove?
Yeah, that would be subsidizing a private utility. Because you're changing, you're fuel switching.
Okay. And that's what we're still checking to see?
Yeah, we're going to get a further check into that.
Okay.
I think that that's important enough where there should be kind of independent review and multiple opinions because that's a pretty fundamental point that, at least at this point, we don't, there seems to be some gray area around.
What was the fourth point?
Oh, I'm sorry. That it was pointing out that the Office of Sustainability is promoting renewable electrification. So pathways under Charlottesville gas control, carbon offsets is one of the pathways. A little background on it, we have existing carbon offset program that was presented to City Council during our rate setting in 2021. And it's a five-year contract that was executed in November of 2021. And it's equivalent to 25% of the gas system emissions. And I might add that carbon offsetting is a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions to make up for emissions that occur elsewhere. There's a strict certification process that, that the registries that authorize these, there's national and international registries that they check the carbon offsets meet the real additional verifiable and permanent criteria. I will note that all offset credits purchased are from projects that have already occurred. So they're not going to occur in the future. They're, they've already occurred and they've created that permanent greenhouse gas reduction already.
Is that with British Petroleum? Is that who we use?
I'm sorry?
Is that with British Petroleum?
So our broker is British Petroleum, but they access the same register other brokers through the country do. You know, the British Petroleum doesn't develop any projects. These international and they're well-known, international or national, depending on where they are in the, in the world, put together these, have these projects that are submitted to them that they certify. And then they have this listing of projects with the greenhouse gas reduction that people look to, to offer to municipal agencies like us or other companies like us. But yeah, so, you know, we're not actually, British Petroleum is not by developing the projects. This registry, everybody goes to in the country to get their carbon offsets. That's where they go to.
Do you think there's any risk that that would, that whole process would crumble under the current administration in DC? Or do you think that's something that?
No, I don't think so.
Could we take that money in whatever the offsets are and invest it in climate work here instead?
Then you would not see the, well, let me get to a further side and you'll see the impact on it.
Can I ask a question about the brokership?
Excuse me?
Can I ask a question about the brokership?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Is that, do we need a broker?
Yeah, you have to have a broker. It doesn't matter if it's British Petroleum or somebody else in the country that, there's a lot of people, and there are some flyby, you know, people you wouldn't want to get associated with is what I hear. But yeah, you need a broker, you just can't go to the registries directly.
Is that a federal thing or how, how come it's set up that way?
I don't know that detail, but I can get that back to you.
Yeah, it would be, it would be good, you know, because this is one I hear a lot of questions about to see.
Yeah, I can give you more detail.
Just to find out more about that, to see if maybe if we can set our own standards and, because that, you know, maybe I've been watching too many PBS specials that these, that these things are not, you know, really doing what these supposed to be doing.
Well, supposedly they are verified, so when people visit them and this registry controls them, that's pretty well respected. So, but I can get you more detail on that. I can write that up for you. So when we got feedback on carbon offsets based on the carbon mitigation study, the program was 83% people thought that it should be greatly expanded, slightly expanded, or should continue as is. But yet we did, when we listened to, at the listening sessions, there were general concerns surrounding the potential of greenwashing and there's interest in sourcing more local carbon offsets. Now, carbon offsets, there's some considerations. It's relatively low cost per carbon removed. And the carbon, carbon offset program increases the average monthly bill by 60 cents. Carbon offsets are readily available to meet goals. Carbon offsets complement our energy efficiency initiatives and successful implementation of energy efficiency initiatives could reduce our dependence on carbon offsets. There are no local projects or Virginia projects that meet the criteria to be a certified carbon offset at this point. But we are currently in conversation in-house about what we could do moving forward to promote local projects or even something regionally or even something in Virginia. Just so we have that local flavor that, but yet it still needs to be verifiable and that you can take the, the credit. But it is something for discussion.
Have you told us how much we're spending on offsets right now?
We're spending about 342,000 a year.
And, you know, I'll, I'll just say even with this slide, I, you know, my inclination is that we would be better off to use that, you know, almost $400,000 a year to be investing either in local efforts or the Office of Sustainability or some initiatives like that. I know there are, I know we're not investing in the worst carbon offsets there are, but just last year, there's a big, you know, case of BP broker carbon offsets, just financing anti-deforestation efforts for forests that were just never going to be cut down. There's other weird things. I think just the verification, especially when you're talking about governments around the world, the verification of what's happening is just inherently not that strong. And I just feel like we would see more immediate benefits, you know, investing in, in local efforts. Because a lot of these carbon offset investment vehicles, I just, I think there's just inherently no way to evaluate exactly what happened, at least like on our end, but.
Yeah, hopefully I can provide you some more information about that.
Yeah, and just with that, it would be good to know if we could, with that 4,000, $400,000, like if we were to use that for more incentives or, you know, if that would make a difference, you know, what kind of comparison of that?
So we move into pathways that are under our control. And to review the low-carbon fuels, which includes green and blue hydrogen and renewable natural gas. Green hydrogen is created from electrolysis powered by renewable energy. Blue hydrogen is created from steam methane reformation with carbon capture. And renewable natural gas is a pipeline-quality biogas developed using sources from landfills, livestock operations. livestock operations, waste art treatment plants, food waste, and other organic waste. So low-carbon fuels, when you look at blue and green hydrogen, commercialized low-carbon fuels is being used in small volumes today, and currently hydrogen can be blended up to 15% by volume directly into natural gas pipelines with minimal disruption to end users. And this has to do with the BTU value of hydrogen, it's a lot less than natural gas, so you can only blend up to a certain point and it not have to any effect on the end user. In October of 2023, the Department of Energy awarded $7 billion for seven hydrogen hubs across the US, and these hubs are expected to be operational between 2030 and 2037. And one is the Mid-Atlantic Hub, which is very close to where our gas is fed to our system, so there is the possibility and feasibility that we can access hydrogen when it's developed. We, you know, right now, fuel prices for hydrogen are significantly higher than natural gas prices, but they're expected to decline dramatically in approximately 10 years, just based on supply. With regards to renewable natural gas, access to supply is currently limited by source availability, but for the study and based on Black and Veach's insight, it's capped at 22% blend into the pipeline, just based on availability in the future.
Based on availability, but not sign, like, if it was 100% renewable natural gas, it would function the same way? There's just not enough to provide that?
There's not enough, that's correct. They don't anticipate there will be enough by 2050 either.
That would be fed into like the the pipelines at some point?
I'm sorry?
That type of natural gas would be blended into the pipelines where we?
Yes, yes.
Because I don't, you're not going to get enough out of the RWSA treatment plant.
So we've been looking at this project with them, because currently, you know, they they flare off their methane, and it's off, it's a byproduct of what their process is to stabilize their digester solids. And it, you know, there is a possibility that we could develop a project to, for renewable natural gas, you know, initial, initial, you know, it's not, it's not a lot, but, and we're trying to make sure it's feasible. Similarly, Western Virginia authorities, which serves the greater Roanoke area, partnered with a private gas company, Roanoke Gas, and they've got this system down. They produce renewable natural gas. It's a bigger treatment plant than Ravanna's, so there's not as much opportunity. I can't remember the numbers of how much they actually furnish for how many households, but it is real, and they're currently doing it. We actually went and visited that, the Western Virginia Authority.
And just to clarify, the benefit of renewable natural gas is that the sourcing of it reduces carbon, but the burning of it still?
No, then, you don't burn it then. So instead of flaring off, you produce this product that then is piped into the pipeline.
Which is then burned.
Right. So the end user is still emitting carbon from the renewable natural gas?
Depends, right? Maybe.
I mean, I don't know how furnaces work, but...
Yeah, well, it's renewable.
It's just the net amount.
Yes, the net amount, that's right.
The net amount is reduced.
Right, it's reduced, but it's still not zero.
And that's factored into our model.
Yeah.
With the green and blue hydrogen, you know, that DOE award was through the Inflation Reduction Act and bipartisan infrastructure law. Is it known if the Trump administration is going to be, you know, cutting those contracts and funds, or is that TBD?
It's to be determined, but...
I think we should assume it will be cut, but...
I don't, you know, I don't, I haven't heard anything.
Then two days later, it'll get restored, and then...
I don't know, I don't know. It's certainly something we need to watch.
Don't open fire in the meantime.
And like hydrogen fuel, unit costs for renewable natural gas are higher than natural gas, but are expected to decline with availability in the mid to long term. So looking at our 2030 goal, and these are the various pathways that they looked at our consultant. We are on track to meet our 2030 goal of 45%. And, you know, those, the ones that are kind of grayed out are really what I'm going to talk about on the 2050, but I left them on this slide, just so you can get a flavor of the different pathways that get something looked at. But currently, we're on track with our energy efficiency and our current carbon offsets we buy to meet the 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 goal. For 2050, we add in light decarbonization, it's still a little grayed out because it doesn't quite meet the 2050 goal, but light decarbonization includes energy efficiency, renewable natural gas at 22%, and green hydrogen is the one that's circled, and with no carbon offsets, and we would meet the goal of 82%. So we don't quite meet it. If you look at the moderate and you add in the current track of carbon offsets, we almost meet the goal at 99%. So you'd have to buy just a tad more carbon offsets to meet the goal at 100%. So in other words, you've got energy efficiency, 22% renewable natural gas, 15% blended green hydrogen, and then some carbon offsets to meet your goal.
Can you run R N G with hydrogen?
Yes.
What is the significance to the dotted circle?
That that's saying that this is assuming we use green versus a little more desirable than the blue, the way it's processed. It doesn't matter which one, frankly, but we circled the green.
Okay.
Okay, so, oh...
I'm not, almost done. No, I'm not done. I've got like five more slides.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So the cost comparison on the current track, and we were very conservative when we looked at this pricing, because in the last several years, the O and M budget in gas, we experienced about a 7% increase on the last several years, every year, just due to increases in cost. But we did factor in inflationary, just to be very conservative of 3% per year. Based on the current track, and the other ones, because they don't need to be considered to meet the 2030 goal, the estimate's about $80.70 on the monthly average bill in 2030. And then if you look at 2050, the current track, without any decarbonization, your 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 normal bill is $360.30, and then you have to add in to meet fuel decarbonization about, with green hydrogen, about 27.4% on top of that, or about $90.
How much of it is assumed to be driven by, with the increase of electrification, there's just going to be a smaller customer base over time?
There is some of that factored in, because we did have some numbers of how it's declining a little bit, so there is some of that factored in. Now we move into next steps. These are some of the next steps you saw as we recommended during last year's rate report, and I wanted to give you an update on where we are with them. We established a new fee structure to disincentivize new gas connections, and the revenue source from this will fund the expansion of new utility energy efficiency programs. This was implemented in January of 2025. It's a little early to start evaluating whether this is effective or not, because we've only had two new requests in two months. So it's just a little early to evaluate.
And that was the adjustment to $430 or whatever?
340.
340.
We developed a new weatherization program, which I'm going to tell you on an upcoming slide what that looks like, and it's supposed to be launched next month. We evaluated the existing rebates. We increased the value of the attic installation rebate in February. We deleted the tankless water heater in July. We're ongoing partnering with the Office of Sustainability to select annual carbon offset projects, and we increased the frequency of the Energy Saving Tree Program. We only previously did it in the spring, and we're now, we conducted that last October as well. And I might want to point out, based on a comment, that it's not the intent of this program to use this to reduce the community's emissions, even though it will inherently reduce them. It's just intended to be a goodwill effort to promote energy efficiency, because if the planting, if the tree is planted in such a way, it will provide more shade for the house, thus less energy required. And we also are promoting our safe digging practices with that program. We're also looking at emerging technologies, specifically community geothermal. There's 11 projects that were selected by the Department of Energy to receive funding recently, and six of the locations are in urban suburban communities, four located in rural communities, and one is located in a remote isolated community. Total of $13 million has been allocated for some of these pilot programs. We're actually closely watching a, one in Massachusetts, which is a geothermal, community geothermal project, serving 40 homes. It's a private gas utility that's instigating that, and we're kind of interested in how that works out and the cost. But we're, it's just developing. Some next steps for energy efficiency initiatives. We're starting a new outreach campaign that will be similar to our gas safety campaign, where we're just getting more of the target audience by targeting on-demand streaming ads and TV commercials to try to get them to take us up on energy efficiency programs that we have, especially the free one, you know, because that's one that has a lot of opportunities people can take advantage of. We're promoting Charlottesville gas incentives, and we're excited about this on the newly-launched Energy Resource Hub that was led by our Office of Sustainability. In fact, all of our gas incentives are already out there on that hub. We're also, this is, this is associated with the new program we're getting ready to launch. We're increasing the awareness of attic insulation by offering online attic insulation self-assessment tool. This is in partnership with LEAP. This goes to a lot of the people saying when they've got houses before 1970, they've got adequate attic insulation. So we're going to tell them how they can measure their attic insulation in their attic and see if it's adequate or not, and hopefully incentivize them to take advantage of our attic insulation rebate of $500. And in combination with the 30% tax credit, they can almost get free insulation, so we're hopeful about that. And we're also exploring custom incentives tailored for specific customer segments, which is multifamily and commercial customers. Next steps that are recommended for the 2030, 45% is invest in the energy efficiency initiatives and maintain the 25% carbon offsets. 2050, we would track renewable natural gas availability, including further investigating the opportunities with Ravanna. We would monitor the development and deployment of the nation's, nation's hydrogen hubs, especially the Mid-Atlantic one that's so close to us. And we continue to do research on carbon offsets. We would monitor the emerging technologies and potentially implement them once they become economically feasible and a little more further, more mature. And we're going to collaborate with the Office of Sustainability to track other decarbonization strategies that can be considered for Charlottesville gas. And if you guys have any additional questions?
Yeah, so we have, you know, about, you know, like about 20 minutes, because we do have a closed session item that we can do that from about 6:00 to 6:30. So if we could kind of quickly have our comments and questions, I'll start with you this time, Mike.
Sure. Well, just one question, what was the cost of this study?
The cost of study was a little over $250,000. And then our listening sessions were, we used a different consultant, they were a little over $50,000.
Okay. Well, I'll just say, you know, my my comments, I think, I think this study, you know, clearly shows that the utility is very well-run compared to other utilities in Virginia, and it's very professionally, competently run, has much better performance than many other peer utilities. And it shows that there are some things going on in terms of efficiency that other utilities aren't doing. But I don't think this study kind of matched my expectation for what I thought we were looking for, and maybe that's just the scope of the study. But to me, like, the big question is, with the Virginia Clean Economy Act changes at the federal level, which maybe you're gone now, but at some point will come back, you know, electrification is kind of the future. And if we're in a situation where, you know, those trends happening at state, federal level, UVA's plan to decarbonize, I think, is it 2030 or 2050? I can't remember, I shouldn't know. But regardless, that, you know, the utility will be in a position, not five years from now, but maybe 30 years from now, where there's a much smaller customer base, electrification is clearly the future, and we have a smaller customer base paying a ton of money, and there are some stranded assets for investments that were made to maybe feed areas like UVA that are no longer using it. And I think if that is happening, you know, 30 years from now, I feel like the city has to start planning now to prepare for that moment. And I kind of thought those are kind of the big question for the city to solve, because that's a very complex question that'll take a lot of time. And this study just didn't really get at that to me. I mean, I think there's, because to me, the big question is electrification. What can we do to incentivize it? There are some innovative models, like DC, other cities that have used a surcharge on natural gas bills to fund sustainable utilities, which are incentivizing electrification and efficiency, you know, is that something that we could model or do? And I just think, you know, especially for the cost, there's not a whole lot of future action I'm seeing coming from this study. It's kind of just more a confirmation of the utility is well-run, and we should just kind of like tweak some of the very, you know, positive things we're doing, but not really thinking about kind of significant system change for the utility. I think especially looking at what's happening at the federal level, I think we just have to be looking that ambitious at a local level. And so, again, I think there's, I was just, I think there's a lot more we need to look at in terms of incentivizing electrification, looking at models of places that have used surcharges to fund electrification and energy efficiency work, as well as, obviously, just within our, you know, city-owned profile of buildings that we have direct control over, looking at how do we electrify those as well? And I'm just not, you know, and maybe it just wasn't the scope of the study, but that obviously is just not as present here, is my concern. And I'm sorry, and I will reiterate, I think we would probably be better off to use that around $400,000 a year in local programs, or that's the Office of Sustainability, or partnerships with LEAP, you know, I don't know. But I think we'll just see, you know, more direct, clear benefits to use that money in that way for local electrification and efficiency.
Thank you. I have a lot of the same concerns that Counselor Payne has, and in fact, I went back and watched the council meeting from March 2023, when this study was first discussed, to see what was the original scope and what was the original intent. And there were several slides from the consultant that included energy efficiency electrification, carbon offsets, renewable natural gas, certified natural gas and hydrogen, and we got some of those. But then in the study as published, it said electrification was outside of the scope of the study. So again, I'm wondering when that scope changed, and how come there wasn't a broader exploration of that? And one of the things that the the meeting also said two years ago, it it said that part of the scope was to try and get the city as a whole to decarbonize, and then part of it was talking about trying to get the utility to decarbonize, and those are two very different things. And so there's some, like, some of the things we're talking about, you're totally right, you can't control end-user behavior. So how is that a factor of this study? But a broader look at what happens when electrification takes over is something that is going to affect our gas utility, not something you affect, but what affects you. So those are, those are kind of missing pieces. And if we're looking at, you know, decarbonizing the city of Charlottesville itself, our municipal structure, how how much natural gas do we use to run our buildings? Do we know that?
I I could get you that information.
Yeah, because it, you know, that's something that they're suggesting, but if it's minimal, if we're mostly electric anyway, that's not going to be a huge step towards, no, we're not mostly electric.
I know my building on Fourth Street's natural gas.
Yeah, so if it'd be great to know, like, how much of a dent that would take out.
And this building's natural gas.
Yeah. Okay, that, that is good to know. And then, the, the legal analysis question, I think that's something that we definitely should get clarification on, like, how much power as a municipal entity do we have to make those judgment calls? There was also no mention of, one of the things that the, in the original scope is discussed, was a discussion about equity, and I, I searched in the document for that word, and it only came up once when it was talking about home equity. So that also kind of wasn't a feature. So I'd be interested to find out what they worked on there, if at all, and, or why, again, yeah, the scope, the scope of it changed. And I do have to say that, like, like Michael said, it is evidence that our utility is well-run, and that is, that is great. We're already doing a lot of the things that they would have suggested. So I wonder, what have we learned in the last two years since this study was proposed that we maybe didn't know already, and what's, what was the value of the, the, it's presented very nicely, was it, was the investment, did we learn anything surprising, which I guess is not, you might not, and that's always a risk you take when you invest in something like this, but was there anything surprising that stuck out that made it maybe worth the full, the full
Some things for me were that, you know, I always envisioned renewable natural gas would be readily available, right? So I was a little surprised it's only twenty-two percent, frankly, but maybe that's because of where it comes from. But I didn't really have any idea on that. And I knew you could only blend up to a certain amount of the hydrogen, but I didn't know it was fifteen percent at all. So, even though, you know, other, other, like, you know, it's widely used for transit buses, right, which don't have the same effect. And I'm hopeful, though, with that said, that the tech, you know, that the, and yet, they only had to base it, the fifteen percent, based on the current technology. So you're hopeful that the, some sort of nozzles or something gets developed associated with hydrogen that will allow you to use hydrogen at a greater mix and still be able to meet the end user's needs, which could help too. But I don't know, that's just kind of the sky stuff.
Yeah.
So they can only base it on what they know.
Yeah.
Okay, we got to boogie along.
That would be interesting, sure. Yeah, I was also, just any kind of legislative suggestions would have been nice on what we could do moving forward. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I would just echo the other things that were said. I, I think maybe, you know, my expectations when I started three years ago, and I guess that's when we first started talking about this, two years ago, I think maybe my expectations were just not in alignment with what reality was going to be. And I'm pulling some of these things from memory, but it seems like in the last presentation you gave us, maybe six months or a year ago, there was a lot of discussion about what the law requires in terms of if you have a gas system, you can't just turn it off.
That's correct.
And I think that there was a lot of, I had this sort of hope that basically we could do something like that, like, okay, we've got, over the course of the next thirty years, we're going to get rid of the system. And I, I guess all we're left with, I guess we can't do that, like, just set out because of the way the law is written with the General Assembly, unless we get that law changed. And so we have to rely on incentives for people to make choices. And that's, that's not, I'm not sure incentives are going to get us out of the climate crisis the way that we're headed into. And so I'm a little, I don't know, pessimistic about what we're going to be able to do with our, with our gas system. I don't think hydrogen or, or R N G are things that are really going to get us there. I think they seem a little gimmicky to me, not saying that about, you know, your presentation or anything, but the ideas, maybe with our buses, we can, we can also work on that. But, you know, I think some of it just, maybe I do agree with, I think we should be looking at this carbon offset notion. If we're spending, you know, four hundred thousand dollars a year funding a rainforest in Zimbabwe or someplace, I don't know, maybe we could just as well use that here on something else. I would also like to know more about the legal piece about if we're making a change that ends up helping the electric company, I don't know why I should have to care about that. I mean, if I will, if I have a certain goal, policy-wise, I don't want less C H four burned in this area, why I have to care about what Dominion says, but that must be something with, with the state government. I don't know. So I think there's just, there's more to be done. I, I think that part of it was just, I know there's a lot of people in the community that are, that are not happy with, with how things have turned out, and I think it's, with the study, I think it's just because I don't think the expectations were right from the beginning. So.
Lloyd?
Couple thoughts. First thought I have is that it seems to me that if we adopt the idea that our low-hanging fruit are the things that we can actually control ourselves, the first thing is to do whatever we can do to electrify city buildings just as soon as possible. Now, obviously, we, you know, we don't necessarily, that doesn't mean you rip out a brand-new HVAC system you put in last year, but think actively about how that can happen. The, the, related to that is, one thing that I think has, has been done very recently that I was really intrigued to see was the Energy Resource Hub. I had asked a year or so ago, I made some comment about what we really sort of need is a buyer's guide, some advice to homeowners about how they can get started on some of these things. And I think that's a really good first step. So the, the one thing that is not, that, that I didn't see in my perusing of the site, and maybe it's beyond the, the capabilities, or maybe it's simply not something that's, that's worth having you all do, I think it would be very helpful to homeowners. And really recognize, we've got many thousands of homeowners in Charlottesville who, I think, would jump at the opportunity to get on the bandwagon here if it could be made easier. I think if we could figure out a way so that somebody could go, for example, have a, you know, watch a presentation online, or have a meeting of the, you know, you have somebody go speak to the Sierra Club, or, you know, something like that. There are all kinds of, of good, green-thinking people who would like to, to get into some of this stuff if they had a sense that they knew how to do it. One of the conversations I had with somebody, I remember thinking, gee, we're about to replace our furnace. Wouldn't it be cool if we could put in a geothermal system? And then started looking at the costs and the benefits and so on, and realized that it, it may make sense for brand-new construction, but it's not going to make sense for, for somebody trying to retrofit. And there are conversations like that and breakpoints that people, I think, kind of need to, they need some guidance on how to, how to think about the problems. And if we could figure out a way perhaps to, to put some of that into the Energy Resource Hub, that, that might be a good idea. But the, the, the idea of, you know, how, how do we, how do we help people get started? Actually, I think there are an awful lot of people in Charlottesville who are in houses that were built before nineteen seventy, who don't understand exactly where their problems are. We have a system for doing energy audits free of charge for folks that are under a hundred and twenty percent AMI. But I got to tell you, the folks at two hundred percent AMI are burning an awful lot of methane they don't need to be burning, and they don't even realize the, the nature, the extent to which they're contributing to the problem. So if we can think more about how we can, can make it easier for, for private citizens to do the things that we want them to do, it's not a matter, we may not even have to offer incentives to do it, just make it easier for them to do it. The Energy Resource Hub is a good first start. I'd like to see more of that continue.
I just had a couple of quick comments to, I concur with my colleagues, and something that Natalie and particularly Lloyd mentioned, it's about what we're doing, you know, to kind of, we can be kind of the forerunner, you know, so people, we can be the, the role model, in that, you know, if we choose a day twenty, forty or so, that all the city buildings are electrified by, by then. That would be, that would be great. And I think that, you know, Lloyd mentioned bandwagon. I think that we can get more people on the bandwagon if we kind of broaden the incentives. And, and part of that, Michael mentioned some of this, is that look at what other cities are doing. And I know that this is probably now going to be in Crystal's department. I know you have something to do with it as well, but look at what other cities are doing and kind of, you know, I know a lot of cities are looking at us, because a lot of times we're the forerunner in a lot of things, but a lot of cities are doing different things that we could model. And, and to kind of keep that ongoing, and I know we have the staff and things to, to do that now, that would be, that would be great. Let me see, trying to go through my notes here. And the, the equity issue, you know, I think that, that, that messaging is real important, because when I'm out talking to my, the, the residents, and particularly in the community of color and low wealth, this is, even though it is probably impacting them more, it's not at the forefront of what their, their concerns to me is about. And so I think that the messaging, you know, needs to be pretty pinpoint. And there, if we can't do it, I know that there's some groups out there that can help us with that, that messaging, that's, that's known to them, that's, you know, not that we're not trusted, but they may trust them a little bit more on things like this. But anyway, so it's a good, you know, setup. I'm glad, I'm glad that we're, we're doing well as far as our department and what we're doing. I think that if we were to start this study now, what we know, we would probably write the parameters and guidelines for it a lot different now than, than we would when it was first started. So, Sam, this was just for this discussion. I know it's a lot of notes. I hope somebody, somebody was taking them all.
I got them. We'll have, we'll come back.
Good.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Is that it for now? We're going into closed session, Sam?
I think so.
Pursuant to Section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Virginia Code, I move that the City Council close this open meeting convened in the closed session as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as follows. Under Virginia Code, Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven, for briefing by staffers pertaining to actual litigation, where such briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Second.
Okay, can we vote?
Well, we're going to close session. We'll be, we'll be back in about thirty minutes.